We call a formal session of Virginia Beach City Council to order. Our invocation this evening will be by the Reverend J. McCoy, pastor of Discovery Church. Pastor McCoy?
He did not check in.
All right, everybody stand please.
Reverend.
Pastor Russ. And following the invocation, everybody remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always with us, near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the fairs of this our great city. Guide us and direct us. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to certify the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session being in accordance with a motion to recess.
May I have a motion to approve the informal informal session minutes of September the 4th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Oops, I meant to, I'm sorry, I meant to hit the abstain button because I wasn't here.
Nine to zero.
All right, well, we have a couple of presentations this evening, and I would like to first read a resolution pertaining to Hurricane Matthew Long Term Recovery Group. I believe Melissa Zabutis, volunteer resources coordinator.
Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask, could we have Reverend Hillcrans and Michelle to come up as well, please? Melissa.
Please.
If it wasn't for Reverend Bob and Michelle during this whole endeavor, this would not have happened, so we have to have them here.
Thank you very much for being here with us this evening. The resolution reads, whereas on October 8th, 2016, Hurricane Matthew made landfall in South Carolina, moving north, Matthew added 14 to 18 inches of rain in less than 12 hours on top of an already saturated Virginia Beach. Whereas in Virginia Beach, 2,200 homes were damaged by the rain associated with Hurricane Matthew. Whereas voluntary agencies immediately joined forces with the city of Virginia Beach in an effort to help residents in need of assistance. Whereas the unmet needs of an entire apartment complex, as well as 560 single-family residences, were assisted by the Hurricane Matthew Long Term Recovery Group. Whereas Muck and Gutt operations began in neighborhoods led by Operation Blessing, Inc., Southern Baptist Disaster Relief Team Rubicon, and United Methodist Committee on Relief. And whereas as time went on, the United Methodist Conference, also known as UMCOR, took the reins and brought in additional voluntary agencies to continue the long-term recovery effort. Whereas Catholic Charities coordinated disaster case management. And whereas the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and Eastern Shore assisted with food replenishment. And whereas Habitat for Humanity helped provide furniture and materials. And whereas Southern Baptist Disaster Relief and Team Rubicon assisted UMCOR on various work sites. Whereas the Salvation Army of Hampton Roads Area Command assisted with replacing household goods and furniture. And whereas the United Way of Southampton Roads signed on as the fiscal agent managing all the grants and donations given in the relief effort. And whereas Volunteer Hampton Roads assisted with volunteer recruitment. Whereas St. Luke's United Methodist Church donated their space as a volunteer reception center and headquarters for the disaster relief effort. And whereas local leadership from various United Methodist Churches coordinated and recruited volunteers from across the country, assisted with case management, and led the entire construction effort on each home. And whereas more than 5,000 volunteers from all over the country have come to Virginia Beach to help survivors rebuild. And whereas volunteers represented all ages, backgrounds, and experience levels donating more than 37,000 hours of service to the effort valuing $915,000 to Virginia Beach residents. And whereas a very special thank you to the following individuals for their service and leadership. Robert Hillcrans, United Methodist Church. Shannon DS Kane, Virginia Beach City Council. Melissa Zabutis, City of Virginia Beach. Robert Williams, Southern Baptist Convention. Bill Reed, United Way. Chris Ton, Catholic Charities. Chuck Rowley, United Methodist Church. Janet Moore, Volunteer Coordinator, United Methodist Church. Susan Pleasance, Volunteer Hampton Roads. Ellen Comstock, United Methodist Church. Bob Bledsoe, Team Rubicon. Virginia Beach Public Library Therapy Dog Program. And the Virginia Wesleyan University Interns, working alongside Michelle Michelin, United Methodist Church, for the past two years. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council pauses its deliberations to pay tribute to these dedicated community leaders by expressing gratitude for their assistance to those affected by Hurricane Matthew. Be it further resolved that this 18th day of September 2018 be celebrated as Hurricane Matthew Long Term Recovery Group Day, adopted by the city council, the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, this 18th day of September 2018. And they're signed by all of the city council members. Please, somebody step forward if you will.
Are you brave enough to let me say thank you?
Yes, sir, please do.
Please do.
You know, it's dangerous to give a pastor a microphone any day but Sunday. But I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor and council members, that this didn't operate in a vacuum. The volunteer agencies say thank you for your support, obviously. We enjoyed coming here and working. And it's because of the City of Virginia Beach leadership, you all on the council, Dave, Melissa, and listen, the list goes on, of all the people who reached out and helped us every time we asked. And I have to tell you, every time we asked for help or got something, it was with a smile. You know, the leadership of the city is to be commended. This is my first rodeo, and I gotta tell you, this is probably the, if there's a best hurricane disaster recovery, this was the best one that I've ever experienced. Right down at the lady at the gate, at the dump, who smiled and talked to me every time I brought a load up there. She and you all are just amazing people, and I thank you. And Dave, I promise.
Yeah, you did. You delivered.
I know, you delivered.
Yes, she did.
And so did you.
Congratulations.
And I thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
I shortchanged you, there was another one.
Michelle, would you like to say something? You've worked so hard with everybody during this. All of these families now have a new family member, and that's Michelle. She has ingratiated herself into every family that she's helped, and I think they all are now sending her holiday cards and including her in their family dinners, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Yes, it was very, it was a great, even though a terrible hurricane, but it was wonderful to extend my resources and to extend your resources to help these people that are, were in very much need and still are in need. And then with this Hurricane Florence coming up, I had a lot of phone calls, a lot of nervous people. But anyway, I wanted to thank all of y'all and thank the City of Virginia Beach for everything that y'all have done for us.
Thank you.
Okay?
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask our quarterback to come to the podium? Who called the signals, who put a game plan together, who ran interference for all of us, who cried asleep quite a lot during those days, but lived it every day, our representative of our volunteer office. And Melissa Zabutis is probably the star of this show for the city, for sure, so.
It is an honor and a pleasure to work in this city. I have experienced in the past couple of years why the city is so awesome. And I will say, I had never, the first and only hurricane I'd ever experienced, I was eight years old, and Hurricane Bob, and I don't remember it. And so when I showed up and they said, "You need to help," I called on these guys because they're seasoned pros. So thank you for allowing us to do this work. It is really important and meaningful, and it makes us kind of appreciate just living in this cool city, so thank you.
Thank you. We also have a presentation, Board of Directors of Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach. Carolyn Garrett is supposed, there she is, come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. She just said, "A cool city." I'm gonna show you how it's even more cool tonight. Good evening, Mayor Jones, and Vice Mayor Wood, and also liaison to Sister Cities, and City Manager Dave Hanson, and the rest of the city council. We are delighted to be here tonight. I'm Carolyn Garrett, as the mayor just said, and I'm president of Sister Cities, as most of you know. And these are two of our adult board of directors, Trenice Riggs and Maria Weisensil. And tonight I have the wonderful opportunity to introduce some of our youth board members and also our youth ambassador for 2018. We have with us Cameron Grove. Cameron, he is a Green Run High School student and has attended three international Sister Cities conferences. We were so proud of Cameron this year when he was chosen to speak for Virginia Beach and his youth group at the conference, at the entire conference. We also have a new youth board member over here, and that's Will Butler. And Will, I hadn't met him until tonight, I have to be honest, but I have read his resume, and it would take you quite some time to do it. I don't know how Will has a chance to sleep. So we're excited about having him and having him work with us this year. Our youth members work just as the regular board members. They have jobs, they're on committees, and they work very, very hard. Now, the next person is our current youth ambassador for Virginia Beach Sister Cities, Emily Myers. Emily is a student at Tallwood High School's Global Studies and World Language Academy, and she's supported tonight, by the way, by her director, Jessica Wimbush. Jessica, raise your hand back here. And we were delighted to have her come and be with us, too. Emily also attends the governor's school. In fact, she called me about 5 o'clock and she says, "Ms. Garrett, I'm leaving downtown. How do I get there?" And I thought, "Oh, my gosh." She is studying musical theater, and some of you have heard her sing. What a wonderful, wonderful talent. Virginia Beach has some wonderful kids. We need to remember that. She is a very special young lady, and we are so proud to present her to you. Emily, would you say a few words?
Hi, I'm Emily Myers. I'd like to thank Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Wood, and Mr. Hanson, and the city council members for allowing me to be here and speak with you today. My journey with the Sister Cities of Virginia Beach started when they sponsored my trip with the governor's school to our sister city in Japan, Miyazaki, and several other cities there. That trip changed my life. I was able to connect with Japanese students and their families and be immersed in Japanese culture and lifestyle. That experience taught me that even though we live across the world from each other, have different cultural norms, and speak different languages, we really aren't that different. The trip even inspired me to take Japanese at my school, the Tallwood Global Studies and World Languages Academy. This is the kind of difference the Sister Cities Association can make through every people-to-people exchange trip. I have also gotten numerous opportunities to share my talent through the Sister Cities of Virginia Beach, including singing at the Virginia Beach Cherry Blossom Festival and the Dancing with the Stars benefit for Virginia Musical Theater. Because I have the chance to be an ambassador for an organization I believe so strongly in, I make sure every day that I am the kind of person the organization needs to be well-represented. I make sure my choices exemplify what we stand for. This is why I am honored to serve as the Sister Cities Association's 2018 Youth Ambassador. Thank you.
I forgot, from the mayor's council, we also have two ladies with us, and they were here to support Will. That's Nikki Vasquez and Suzanne Phelps over here. And Mayor Jones, can we take some pictures? Do we have, can you come down, or whomever will, and let's take a few pictures? Do we have enough time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And Jim, you'll have to come. You have to come down.
There she is, she's hiding. Oh, my goodness.
We know her.
She's looking great.
Shannon.
Good job. Oh, thank you.
I understand we have a speaker on one of the items for the consent agenda, so I'm gonna ask that that person come forward and speak, and then we'll deal with the consent agenda. Under Ordinance and Resolutions, item one, which is an ordinance to confirm the declaration of a local emergency, Hurricane Florence.
Mrs. Marsh.
Good evening, House members. I just wanted to stop and talk to you about this because I felt that, given that we had a mandatory evacuation here in the city of hundreds of thousands of people by the state and the city, that it was important to think about the decisions we make going forward about building in the Punggol area. We've had excessive flooding down there, we have people here from Punggol, and we are all looking at the roads being impassable. The city keeps putting up lists of roads that are not available currently because of the hurricane, and we are waiting for the Dewberry report to come out. It is still pending. It has not been finalized. There are portions of it that have been reviewed by Public Works. But before we push forward with more development down in Punggol, I think it would be good to tap the brakes and take a moment and really look at what we're doing and the families that we're putting in harm's way. I personally know of a woman down there on Muddy Creek Road who cannot get out of her home right now, and we need to really evaluate what we're doing, given that we just survived what could have been a horrible hurricane. And I just ask you to, before you make any big decisions, maybe this isn't about this ordinance, but that you really think about what you're doing and how the citizens are so impacted. Thank you.
We'll now have the consent agenda. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, a move for approval under the consent agenda of the following items. Under Ordinances and Resolution, item K1, ordinance to confirm the declaration of a local emergency regarding Hurricane Florence, noting that it is a substitute version that was passed out to council members today. Mr. Stiles, can you tell us the difference?
Yes, sir. The substitute version actually includes the termination of the declaration of emergency effective as of 6 o'clock on September 14th, which is required by statute. I will note on the leases, the public hearing.
Yes.
Do you want to call that?
Let me do the public hearing first. Now declare a public hearing. Number one, lease of city properties, Little League A, 2513 Shore Haven Drive, Great Neck Baseball League, Inc. Any speakers?
There are no speakers on any of those items.
All right. Also, B, 952 Reon Drive, Kempsville Borough Boys Baseball, Inc. C, 586 North Lynn Haven Road, Boys Baseball of Lynn Haven, Inc. D, 632 Firefall Drive, Virginia Beach Little League, Inc. And E, 3332 North Gate Drive, Plaza Little League.
There are no speakers, sir.
Close the public hearing. Now we can do the consent.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, a move for approval under the consent agenda. Item K1, ordinance to confirm the declaration of a local emergency regarding Hurricane Florence, the substitute version which has a termination date effective September 14th, 2018. Item two, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute five leases for the use of city park properties regarding Little League operations. A, 2513 Shore Haven Drive for Great Neck Baseball League Incorporated. B, 952 Reon Drive for Kempsville Borough Boys Baseball Incorporated. C, 586 North Lynn Haven Road, Boys Baseball of Lynn Haven Incorporated. D, 632 Firefall Drive, Virginia Beach Little League Incorporated. E, 3332 North Gate Drive, Plaza Little League Incorporated. Item three, ordinance to authorize a cooperative agreement between the city council and the school board regarding legal services to the school board administration by the Office of the City Attorney for FY 2019. Item four, ordinances to accept and appropriate grant funds from Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles to police and authorize an end kind match to A, $48,000 regarding DUI enforcement, B, $52,000 regarding seatbelt enforcement. Item five, ordinance to appropriate $54,424 of fund balance from the police federal and state seized asset special revenue fund regarding expenses incurred during an investigation.
Declare a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item L1, Providence Presbyterian Church for conditional use permit regarding childcare education center and religious use at 5497 Providence Road in the Kempsville District. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Second. All right, the vote is open.
Mr. Davenport, may I? Thank you. By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda, as read by the vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I could, I raised the issue at our, I think it was our last meeting, regarding whether or not the inheritance by my wife, or partial inheritance by my wife, of a piece of property in Sandbridge would constitute a conflict of interest. The city, Commonwealth Attorney Colin Stoll, did a very nice job, I thank, for giving me a very quick response. He said, "I do have a personal interest, and if this was just a vote on Sandbridge, I would have a conflict of interest." Since this is a very broad ordinance, he goes on to say, "In this particular instance, I do not have a conflict of interest." And he can only rule on very specific issues, and thank you, there was no amendments, but I might have abstained, because he will only give an opinion on a very specific issue. But I did want to clarify that I do, in fact, have a personal interest, and that my wife has inherited a parcel property interest in a home at Sandbridge. But if in this instance, this ordinance is so broad, but let me go on to say, because I'm voting for it, doesn't mean I agree with all the issues in it. We're just asking the planning commission to give us our opinion, and there are things in here I do not agree with.
Okay, before we move forward, I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone numbers for the clerk to record. We'll now go to item six, under Ordinances and Resolutions, which is Resolution to Refer to Ordinance to amend Sections 102, 111, 401, 501, 601, 901, 1110, 1112, 1521, and 2203 of the city zoning ordinance, and Section 5.2 of the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code, Ray definitions, requirements, and use of home sharing and short-term rentals to the planning commission. Madam Clerk?
The first speaker is Elaine Fekety.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Elaine Fekety, and as y'all know from the many times I have spoken, I own a house in Sandbridge that we rent during the summer holidays and weekends because we're actually renting our residence. I'd first like to take an opportunity on behalf of all the people in Sandbridge, minus 18, to thank Councilman John Moss for all of his dedication in trying to look at it from both sides in all districts and streamline the conversation to identify where there really is a problem that you really can do something about. Y'all all certainly get an A for time spent on this. I know it's been brutal, but I have an issue with the content that came out of it last week, and I'll get to that in a minute. You know, we're making progress, and I saw compromise coming. I didn't agree with it necessarily, but that's life. But last Tuesday, while we were under, while the majority of the short-term rentals were under mandatory evacuation, we had to slide that one more thing in there, just that one more thing. And that one more thing was the very thing that y'all were talking against the whole time. There is no one-size-fits-all. But guess what? Tonight you are voting on a one-size-fits-all to go to the planning commission. I don't get it. I don't get it. I don't know that anybody gets it. This is not a game of Monopoly that we handed you. You can't just sit there and laugh during the meetings and goof off and just play around with our houses. For me and for many others, this is how we are surviving in this city. This is how we are paying our bills. This is not just for fun. It's not a Monopoly game. But the point I wanted to make is, we've given you numbers in the past, time after time, that show the data on the amount of tax revenue that we are generating, not just to support our community, but school boards, flooding, infrastructure. And I don't ever see anybody questioning why we are so hell-bent on making a determination to reduce that tax revenue without any question. It may be a surprise to you, tax revenue in Sandbridge is more than Town Center. Then we're just gonna take it this lightly, this kick-the-can attitude, just let the planning commission deal with it? Don't like it at all. We are already taking reservations for 2019. I bet some of them aren't within these requirements due to occupancy. I know mine aren't because of the number of rentals. But if zoning needs to find a determination to make a distinction, here it is, and if all of you can't figure out how to do it... And if all of you can't figure out how to do it, how can you figure out how to help the city with real problems? The determination is, Sandbridge is a 5-mile stretch of land bordered by the Atlantic Ocean and the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge. There's your distinction. It doesn't have anything to do with Lexington, it doesn't have anything to do with Fairfax County, it doesn't even have anything to do with Centerville. Thank you.
Donna Watson.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Donna Watson. I also have spoken to you all several times. I am a co-chair of Protect Virginia Beach Neighborhoods. We are a group of Virginia Beach residents who are concerned about the erosion of residential neighborhoods, and the health and safety issues caused by short-term rentals. We believe that the proposed ordinance is a good compromise between the needs of the residents, and the desires of the business entities who run short-term rentals. Thank you all for the time and effort you have put into drafting this ordinance. I know you've spent a lot of time, I've been at every single one of the meetings. I hope that the Planning Commission uses your rationale in their review of your ordinance, and understands the importance of protecting the residential neighborhoods of Virginia Beach. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
That's all the speakers. I have signed up.
Is there anybody who would like to speak who has not signed up?
So, I was just handed a letter from the Sandbridge Civic League. I'll distribute a copy to each of you this evening after the meeting.
That'll be fine. Does it influence our vote?
I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance. I just was handed.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Mr. Moss asked if it would influence the vote. I just had, she just handed it to me.
Is she here? Can she read it to us?
She doesn't want to read it.
Okay.
Does it want to read it?
She does not.
Okay.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Ms. Wood.
I think we need to explain to, this is just one step in the process, that we're going to be looking at each overlay district individually, which would include Sandbridge. This is just a general, suggestions for what we should be doing for the city overall, but we will be looking at each overlay district as it comes about, including Sandbridge.
Mr. Moss.
I don't want to make any comments relative to Sandbridge or get myself in trouble, but I do want to reiterate that I have consistently said, across the city, that conditional use permits is not protecting neighborhoods, because once we go there... So, I'm going to send this to the Planning Commission, but let it be clear, I am not supportive of the conditional use approach. It is a loophole that allows neighborhoods, be they bay-like pines, or wherever they are in the city, to ultimately become hotel districts, and it doesn't provide meaningful protection to neighborhoods.
Anybody else? All right. Vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the resolution to refer the ordinance to the Planning Commission.
We'll now go back to the public comment on the legislative agenda. Do you have any speakers for that? Madam Clerk?
Chris Stone is the first speaker.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager Hanson, members of council. My name is Chris Stone. Most of you know me as a resident and a business owner. What you probably don't know is I'm a registered lobbyist in the Commonwealth of Virginia, have been for the past 6 years. It's been a real baptism by fire, I can tell you. But one thing I have learned is that if you are not at the table, someone in Richmond will put you on the menu. But there are 2 additional items that I would ask you to consider. I do support, I think, the positions that have been put forward by City Manager Hanson and Bob Mathias, but one of the issues has to do with the small business designation, and I know I've talked to you before, but we don't agree with the small business definition for sure. The city does have a moral and ethical responsibility to promote the inclusion of small women and minority businesses in procurement. However, the definition used to certify those small businesses is completely arbitrary. We believe the small business definition effectively creates a loophole, and that any company with less than 250 employees can have unlimited revenue and still be certified as a small business. Some of you probably get the Inside Business Big Book that is published every year. If you go and look through all the private companies that are in there, most of them have revenues over hundreds of millions of dollars, but they are certified small businesses. So, why do these companies need special consideration when it comes to public procurement? Why would we allow these companies to compete with legitimate small businesses in the Commonwealth, and in the city of Virginia Beach? So, last year, we introduced 2 pieces of legislation. One was Senate Bill 318, one was House Bill 513. Both proposed changing the definition. Senate Bill 318 passed the Senate, but both bills were left in House appropriations, and it was primarily because of the budget impasse. So, I am requesting that the city consider supporting legislation that updates the small business definition, and more adequately reflects the real small businesses and promotion of sway and procurement within the city. The second concerns 2 bills that failed last year, Senate Bill 985 and House Bill 229, designed to establish the Hurricane and Flood Risk Reduction and Bond Rating Protection Act of 2018. Senate Bill 985 passed the Senate, was left in House appropriations, and House Bill 229 was left in House rules. The goal of the legislation is to support hazard mitigation actions through the mitigation of risk through structural, non-structural, and natural, and nature-based solutions. Improvement of risks through life safety through awareness, support of economic and environmental resilience, reduction of flood insurance premiums through the implementation of higher standards, and promotion of higher building standards to reduce flood risk. The legislation establishes the Virginia Hurricane and Flood Risk Reduction Authority, aiding with hurricane and flood risk reduction programs, including investigations, construction operations, and maintenance, and ensures that Virginia speaks with one voice to the federal government on flooding and storm risk reduction. So, while we cannot eliminate the risk from extreme storm events such as Hurricane Florence, we can reduce their impact and our recovery through an authority that represents our interests, and I would ask that you support such legislation. And I do have copies of the legislation, if you care to see them. So, thank you very much.
Can you hand that to the clerk, so we can get a copy? Can I have that? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers again. In the informal session tonight, one of the most heartening things I heard was said by Councilman Moss, and I would greatly be in favor of going to the legislature and having it rewritten, the legislation, so that whenever there is a bond in excess of $10 million, it would be submitted to the question of issuance to the qualified voters. It has really been disheartening that we have $300 million worth of self-funded debt that's been issued by the VBDA. Our city currently has $1.228 billion, with a B, in bond debt. Most citizens don't have that number etched in their mind like I do. I have that there because I am still waiting for the unfunded pension liabilities, which were reported in June of 2017 at $1.384 billion. So, taxpayers are on the hook for $2.6 billion that they owe, or their children, or the next generation owe. So, I am really thrilled that Councilman Moss has taken this really positive step. I hope we do submit it to the legislature. I hope it passes. And things like the sports complex, which I feel overwhelmingly, most citizens do not want $68 million issued in debt and spent in an area that floods for a sports complex. If you had given that vote to us citizens, I think we would candidly have turned it down. And the fact that you did not put that on the ballot is really, really disappointing. So, I just ask you to really look at how you can give it back to the people. The citizens want control over the issuance of debt, and what you have done for the developers and for the other people has really been something that most citizens are not aware of, but I am. So, please do make this happen. It would be really a move in the right direction. Thank you.
That's all the speakers. I have signed up.
Anybody else who has not signed up who would like to speak on the legislative agenda? Thank you. Mr. Wood, would you do the appointments?
Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following people to the following boards and commissions. For the Community Organization Grant Cog, Review and Allocation Committee, Cheryl McCleskey. To the Green Ribbon Committee, Jason Barney, Karen Forger, Laura Huber, Robert Miller, and Robert Thornton. To the Health Services Advisory Board, Dr. Laura Hybe.
Are there any further nominations? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have appointed those as read by the Vice Mayor.
Is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
Just one, if I could. This is good news. The Senate today approved the Defense Appropriation Minibus. So, the House will take that up next week. So, we will actually, that's our biggest industry in Hampton Roads, so it will start off the fiscal year with appropriation through 7 December. So, that's good news for all our defense industries and defense employees.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. If there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned.